I'd like to call to order the Menor City Council February 15, 2022, regular meeting. Invocation will be given by councilperson Dowling.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Prolo minutes, council, you're in receipt of the February 1, 2022, regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landak?
Oh.
Wow, he's back. He's back.
That's not right.
Hi, Bruce.
I thought he was gonna pop in or something.
I did, too. That was pretty cool.
Okay, Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
That's awesome.
Mr. Donovan? Yeah, it was interesting.
We good? Okay. Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 22-0-011.
An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zampetro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll ask our finance director, Mr. Malinowski, to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Zampetro. Members of council, this ordinance does two things. Firstly, it authorizes two large temporary cash advances. Firstly, $1.2 million to fund our street fund. And secondly, $1 million to fund the street lighting fund. These are temporary in nature. They will be returned back to the general fund upon the credit of revenues that come in monthly. And then, second part of the ordinance has a handful of appropriation revisions, largest item being additional appropriations needed to cover the unbudgeted amount in our original budget for the street fund in subsequent ordinance, and also a couple increases to the general fund for firstly, the sidewalk program and the some electrical work at the Menor Beach Park. There's also a CDBG increase, CDBG fund increase in here for a Wildwood elevator project and a MECO small business loan program. I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-011 has been approved. Ordinance number 22-0-012.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Chagrin Valley Paving, Inc., for Contract A and Alternates 1, 2, and 3 of the 2022 road repair program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zampetro?
Thank you, sir. I'll ask our city engineer, Mr. Swigger, to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Zampetro. Four bids are open on Friday, January 21 for the 2022 road repair program. Project will resurface 15 city streets. Streets included this year are Culver Boulevard, Dartmoor Road, Dunbar Drive, Green Oak Avenue, Headlands Road, would be west of Corduroy, Owl Drive, Lynx Road, Longhorn Road, Old Hopkins Road, Orchid Avenue, Rambler Drive, Roof Street, Sycamore Road, Union Street, and Washington Avenue. The bid package consisted of a base bid and three alternates, which included work within Menor on the Lake and Kirtland Hills. The four bids received for the base bid and all alternates ranged from a low bid of $909,213.43 to a high bid of $1,044,289.68. It has been determined that Chagrin Valley Paving of Chagrin Falls, Ohio submitted the lowest total bid of $909,213.43. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost was $939,602.95. Review of the bid from Chagrin Valley Paving indicates it's in conformance with all contract requirements, therefore recommended that a contract be awarded to Chagrin Valley Paving, who are experienced and qualified to perform this work in the amount of $909,213.43. Scheduled final completion date for the project is August 26 of this year. Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-012 has been approved. Ordinance number 22-0-013.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to A&amp;J Cement Contractors, Inc., for Contract B and Alternates 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the 2022 road repair program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zampetro?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Swigger?
Thank you, Mr. Zampetro. Four bids are open on Friday, January 21 for Contract B of the 2022 road repair program. This project will provide full-depth concrete repairs to 16 city streets. The bid package consisted of a base bid and four alternates. Streets included in the base bid are Birchwood Drive, Brimfield Drive, Oneavista Drive, Camelot Court, Durham Court, Galloway Court, Green Ridge Court, Hidden Glen Drive, Ivana Court, Markwood Drive, Maloria Lane, Silver Court, Sunrise Court, Sycamore Road, Terrace Park Drive, and Wayside Drive. Quantities bid under Alternate 1 will also utilize work within Menor on the Lake, be utilized for work within Menor on the Lake. The quantities within Alternate 2 permit reconstruction of inlet basins in the vicinity of the base contract streets. Quantities in Alternate 3 and 4 permit additional repairs to be performed on the base bid contract streets and also St. James Drive. The four bids received for the base bid and all alternates ranged from a low bid of $1,200,630.20 to a high bid of $1,850,839.50. It's been determined that A&amp;J Cement Contractors, Incorporated of Euclid, Ohio, submitted the lowest total bid of $1,200,630.20. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost for the project was $1,218,000, and a review of the bid from A&amp;J Cement Contractors indicates it's in conformance with all contract requirements. Thank you.
Counsel, it's your pleasure.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-013 has been approved. Ordinance number 22-0-014.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the city of Menor on the Lake for the 2022 road repair program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zampetro?
Thank you, Mr. President. As council is aware, we've done this the last few years with Menor on the Lake, allowing them to take advantage of an economy of scale by piggybacking onto our street program. And we, in turn, would receive a slight benefit from that as well, just in terms of the scale.
Mr. Swigger?
Thank you, Mr. Zampetro. As mentioned, bids were opened on January 21 for the 2022 road repair program. Within the bid package were two alternates, which provide work within Menor on the Lake. Annually since 2016, Menor on the Lake has performed their road program within Menor's contract to allow them to take advantage of favorable contract pricing. Menor on the Lake will perform their own inspection and will provide the city with final approved quantities. They will deposit funds with the city to cover their work costs. This legislation provides the agreement between the cities to permit the work to go forward. Menor on the Lake is concurrently passing legislation for this agreement, and the scheduled completion date for the project is August 26 of this year. Thank you.
Counsel, it's your pleasure.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-014 has been approved. Ordinance number 22-0-015.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager, the city manager, the city manager to enter into an agreement with the village of Kirtland Hills for the 2022 road repair program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zampetro?
Thank you, sir. Likewise, we're going to, this is the first time we're going to do it with our neighbor to the south, Kirtland, Village of Kirtland Hills. Mr. Swigger, provide us some detail, please.
Thank you, Mr. Zampetro. Within the 2022 bid, our road program bid package is one alternate, which provides for work within Kirtland Hills. Beginning this year, Kirtland Hills wishes to perform their road program within Menor's contract to allow them to take advantage of favorable contract pricing similar to Menor on the Lake. Kirtland Hills will provide their own inspection and provide the city with final approved quantities, and they will also deposit funds with the city to cover their work costs. The scheduled final completion date for this project is August 26 of 2022. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-015 has been approved. Ordinance number 22-0-016.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to A&amp;J Cement Contractors, Inc., for the sidewalk repair/pedestrian safety program, Zones 2D and 3C and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zampetro?
Mr. Swigger?
Thank you, Mr. Zampetro. Three bids were open on January 28, 2022, for the sidewalk repair and pedestrian safety program, Zones 2D and 3C. That's on the extreme western end of the city, roughly between Lakeshore Boulevard and the railroad tracks. Bids received for the project ranged from a low bid of $482,026 to a high bid of $535,186.22. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost was $477,000. The low bid was received from A&amp;J Cement Contractors, Incorporated of Euclid, Ohio. His bid was found to be in conformance with all contract requirements. It's therefore recommended that a contract be awarded to A&amp;J Cement Contractors in the amount of $482,026. It is anticipated that the work will begin in May with the project completion of August. Thank you.
Counsel, it's your pleasure.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22-0-016 has been approved. Second readings, we have none. Third readings, we have none. Managers' report, Mr. Zampetro.
Thank you, President Donovan. We have two pavement open cuts before council today. The first is involving Lake County Department of Utilities.
Counsel, it's your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes. Mr. Zampetro?
Thank you. As you may know, we canvass our department heads for some news for tonight for the managers' report. It's not, Ken often solicits advice, and tonight we have Mr. Schweickert, and I love his optimism. He's advising our residents wanting a new tree lawn this spring to contact the Department of Public Works, either via email at PubWorks, all one word, at CityofMenor.com, or through submitting a tree request form that's located on the city's website. So, good, positive spring thoughts. I'm still worried about shovel and snow, but... Also, the stone, speaking of stone, in the Menor Lagoons Revetment Project has been placed to plan elevation and is complete. This week, the contractor will start constructing a three-foot-high dirt mound along the north side of the road for Dock A. This'll act as sort of a weir to prevent flooding, which we've experienced with the high lake levels when they show up. So, obviously, the project has gone very well so far, Mr. Swigger?
Sure has.
Yes, good. Also, back down to the lagoons, the bulkhead replacement site clearing at Dock D has begun. Fill is being brought in to bring the grade of the site up to the design elevation. Bulkhead installation will follow approximately two weeks later. The completion date, substantial completion date is March 26, with final restoration scheduled for May 15. We're addressing about 430 lineal feet of bulkhead with this project. And that concludes my report for this.
Thank you, Mr. Zampetro. Any comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marn?
Just I'll bring this up under managers' reports, since Mr. Flipiak already sent council an email. Council was aware, we received an email last Thursday or Friday, dealt with a number of different issues that, as Kevin's aware, we've been talking about for quite some time. But basically, it boils down to our CRA district. Remember how we put that in certain areas in the city council? So, looking at reidentifying that and expanding that. You know, some organizations/cities/townships are the entire city. I don't think we know if we want to do that, but whatever that you guys give us feedback, I appreciate that from the staff. Second is our historic district, as we know, and third is the historic lighting that we talked about. It doesn't all line up. So, what's kind of happening, and it's happened to business owner on Menor Avenue, and possible future replacement for the old Menor Mitsubishi on Menor Avenue, is that everything's not lining up. So, what I was thinking of doing to throw out some suggestions would be to further expand all this and tie everything together, not only those three things, but also from a financial aspect. So, one good thing about having a son in college, that you go to different hockey games, different places, a couple states, you always wind up in these little Allegheny College, or Johnstown, PA, or Robert Morris University, wherever. But you get to go to these cool restaurants/organizations that are very unique. They're not chains that are national chains that you normally have. So, for example, the one that I was telling Ray about and Kevin was an old firehouse, and that was a mile outside of Allegheny College. But anyway, we got to sit right next to their fire pole, and actually, the owner was there, and we're talking about how they came about this, mainly in smoke food and things of that nature, and it's very unique. And you were telling me about their type of CRA, and whether it was a tax credit or anything of that nature, but I thought if we could somehow come up with that so we specialize in the smaller, say, local chains, or like whether it's a Longos, or whether it's a place like this where you're trying to start something up. And I think the hardest thing would be, and I still haven't come up with anything, is how we could tie this in with the county. As we all know, your mom's 100th birthday is gonna be at Menor Beach Park.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that should have been a restaurant, and if we didn't come to fruition. But we need to tie this in with the county, so whether it's the Port Authority, what have you, so at the final hour, once again, well, we need $180,000 in the grants sitting there, and our elevator falls through, and now we're left with nothing. So, that's going to be the hardest part, I think, of this. And, but I figured I'd tell everybody so council knows, and then, you know, the administration, so you guys could all, we could all put our heads together, come up with ideas on how to tie all this together, because I think it'd be something special.
Thank you.
Definitely some cleaning up, and could use some improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Marn.
If I could just tie in a comment with what Councilman Marn just spoke about, I was contacted by a business owner who is in Ward 1, but is part of the old village, but he doesn't have the historic lighting. He really likes it, from the sense that I get. Do we have potential to expand that? I think it would be about five poles on each side, so that the whole entire historic Menor, old Menor area gets those light poles, because right now, they stopped at Old John...
Little Mountain.
Little Mountain, sorry. But to take up the whole entire old village section, see about another five poles going into Ward 1, is that something we could look at and maybe plan on in the future? I mean, I don't know what the cost of those poles are, but everything is super expensive, so...
We can certainly, I mean, it's certainly doable. I mean, we did, you know, the rest of the project earlier, so...
I think the point that this business owner is getting at is his signage is limited because of the old village restrictions, but he doesn't have the benefit of those beautiful decorative poles. And, you know, that's what I wanted to bring up.
I certainly think Councilman Blake will certainly look at the issue. I know the manager is aware of it. I just, I don't know where the administration is on the question itself at this time, but we will get back to council on it.
I'd really like to see those poles through the whole entire old village. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, Mr. Kirchner?
Yeah, I think this might be a good topic for a work session.
Yeah.
Down the line, not too distant future, perhaps.
Great thought. Couple of different... Councilman Krieger?
Well, I think what Councilman Marn said, as far as getting all this to coordinate together, as far as the signage, the lighting, and the district itself, because I'm a little confused, too, because we went down a little mountain, but actually, that's not part of the old village. That's part of the Menor Township. So, I mean, we kind of mixing things together. It shouldn't even have gone that far, because the village actually ended a little, probably past St. Mary's, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
And then it became the township. And then, when they merged in '63, it became the city, but it was not part of the old village. So, but like Mr. Kirchner said, good topic for a work session.
Thank you. I don't know if everybody received Mr. Blake's response from Mr. Flipiak, the explanation of old village, but it was...
Hard to follow.
Six, seven different things. And yeah, I think it's a great idea by Mr. Marn, Councilman Marn, to get that all put together and try to get the county involved, too. It's, yeah, I think it needs to be done. Thank you.
It'll really help us in terms of the economic development. So, we have to say, okay, here, this is what we have, this is what we can do, you know, this is what we can't do, you know what I mean? But it was interesting, just going to these different communities and the different things they offer. They were calling them, like, I guess, like tax abate, type of tax abatement, what have you, and he called it something different. And we're, I don't know, 25 miles northwest of Pittsburgh, you know what I mean? And I didn't know what he was even talking about, but Max's Restaurant, that's what it was, Kevin. That's another place, too. So, but it's interesting.
Thank you. Great idea.
Clerk's correspondence.
Counsel is in receipt of the Menor Municipal Court, January 2022, month end report. That is all.
Commission Committee reports, you're in receipt of the Tree Commission, December 8, 2021. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, January 11, 2022. Municipal Planning Commission, January 20, 2022. Old Business, we have... Mr. President? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Blake?
Tony, could you give us an update on where we're at now with the progress on the Menor Recreational Center, formerly known as Heasley Racket? How things are going?
Yes.
When we can open this up to public?
I can hit a couple of different areas there, sort of a thumbnail sketches to where we're at.
Thank you.
Obviously, since the city took possession at the end of last year, we've had about a month and a half to be out there. Mr. Kaminsky, I almost never see him in the building anymore, because I know he's been putting a lot of time out there on weekends as well. Quite a lot to do from a personnel standpoint. All the prior employees have, for the most part, been brought back. I believe two left for varying reasons. So, they've been switched over into our system. Compensation grades have been properly determined. So, they are on staff here now, as well as a number of, what they had there was independent contractors under different contracting arrangements that typically didn't align with how the city does things. We've brought them under more inline independent contracts that mirror what we do in our other facilities. So, we're very comfortable with where we have those programs as well. The prior management team that was out there is staying with us until the end of April as the transition happens. Part of that, you know, certainly, there's a lot there in terms of understanding all of the various contracting services that go in there, from just having the paper towel deliveries, you know, trying to line those things up with how we do business here. But that's, again, that's just a small example. There's a myriad of vendors that are in and out of there, and we're getting those contracts, again, realigned with how we do business here at the city. So, they have been successful there. They've been monitoring the programming that goes on out there. They've evaluated every one of the longstanding programs, be it tennis, soccer, pickleball, racquetball, fitness, both through in-person observation, as well as meetings with the staff and the participants to get a better understanding of the variety of services that have been offered out there, as well as what will transition more regularly with the city. Let's see, what else did we have? Membership, I'm actually pleased to announce that as we go into this transition, I'm told 85% of the previous members have resigned under the city's umbrella now. So, there have been some members who have left, and the primary concern would be the opening to the public, the public use of what was private, what was once a private club, a private membership. So, some people desire that private membership feel, as opposed to being involved in a public setting. I'm told that's the number one reason, that we have lost some people out there. But again, 85% of the prior members have stayed with us. We've gained 25 new members that were not previous members there since the first of the year, so that's a good sign as well. One of the main things that Mr. Kaminsky's group and the city manager have been involved in is assessing the building needs. So, there were some immediate needs, there's some short-term needs, as well as long-term build-out or infrastructure that may be proposed, primarily relative to the immediate or short-term needs. As we get into the summer season, which is the slow season for them, for the rec facility, we are intending to close the facility May 1 to get the significant bulk of the work that needs to be done, and that would include repainting the entire facility, removing wallpaper from the entire facility, removing flooring from most of the facility. That includes carpeting, carpeting in locker rooms, re-tiling where there's, tile has been failing. The pool is in need of some immediate repairs, the tile on the bottom of the pool. More importantly, the filtration room, we're going to be building out some ventilation in there that doesn't exist, as well as sandblasting, because of, there's been a lot of rust and growth in there because of the lack of ventilation. So, those types of improvements are going to go on. Basically, renovating all of the bathrooms out there, light fixtures, the bunting or batting on the tall parts of the tennis courts, as well as the pickleball and soccer areas have to be repaired. There's a lot of damage there, all the way up to the ceiling. I don't know if you want that extensive list. We can provide it. The list goes on and on and on, but there is a lot of work that has to take place out there in order for us to sort of be ready to open it fully to the public sometime, you know, post-May, certainly before the end of summer or the beginning of fall.
You're certainly ready for that question. That's great.
Well, I kind of knew, and thank you. I think you gave us a heads up that you were going to ask the question, sir.
I think I did.
And unfortunately, Mr. Kaminsky couldn't be here tonight. He did have a conflict. His son's last college basketball game was today.
Oh, yeah.
We did not want to force him in tonight, but we figured we can certainly answer the 10,000 elevation question on this, but as council wants to delve into it more, again, perhaps a work session, or we can provide additional information that's more detailed.
Work session would be great, but do we have a pricing structure established yet? I mean, if we're bringing in new members, is there?
Well, the new members are coming in under the existing pricing structure. So, what will happen is there will certainly be a credit for any downtime in that membership, and then the new pricing structure will be anticipated to be less expensive than what it currently is. So, there will have to be some conversion relative to members, assuming that the pricing that they had went beyond April 30, so.
If we're closing May 1, what's the anticipated length of time of that closure?
That's a great question. I know that, again, the summer months, the hot summer months, basically is the lowest occupancy of the structure, so that's why we're keyed on doing the work at that time. You know, basically, all hands on deck, get it all done. The anticipation is it certainly is going to be ready come September. So, if it can be, our goal is to get it done as soon as possible and get reopened as soon as possible, and put that, you know, really, the new city's facilities stamp on it at that point in time, because it is dated.
Which I'd anticipate would also include resurfacing the parking lot?
I, was that it? Okay. Yeah, I didn't have that one on my list, but.
I don't know if that's part of the specific plan, but it was discussed.
But yeah, at some point, there certainly has to be, yeah, my daughter's out there every week, too. So, I, yes, the parking lot does have to be addressed. Probably, there's a number of ways to do it in the short term, some pothole repair, but long term as well. And I know that the manager is going to try to probably come to council with an RFQ or a contract for an architectural firm to come in, and some significant reimaging, but that's beyond what we're talking about here. We're really talking about the immediate needs of the facility to address some deferred maintenance or updates that haven't occurred.
Last question or point? When this opens, it's going to be top-notch, top-shelf, and it's going to be nice.
No question about that.
You know, we're putting forward a superior product in terms of a recreation center. That I'm very happy to hear.
Absolutely our goal, and fortunately, Mr. Kaminsky's got nearly 30 years of experience of running a, just top-notch indoor recreation facilities, so.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
All right, sir.
Mr. Zampetro, you have another question. Mr. Kirchner?
Oh, it really is a question. It's just a comment. I agree with Tony. I think we all have a lot of questions and suggestions, and I think appropriate that we have a work session probably sometime before we go to that closure.
Mr. President? Mr. Krieger?
One comment, and I know we discussed this with Director Kaminsky, is the fact that all the people that are currently redoing their memberships and people that are taking out memberships now are all aware of the fact that this is going to be shut down. It's not as a surprise to them. And as far as the pricing, the only indication I think he gave us was the fact that the pricing will be different from what the current pricing is a private club. They won't have tennis memberships, racquetball memberships. They will have a membership to the recreation facility.
Yeah.
So, whatever that may be.
Yes, sir. And then, there'll be specific programming that's offered in there, too, so you'll pay for programming that you want, that's specific in nature.
Like you do at the senior center now.
Yes, sir.
Great report. Thanks, Tony. Persons before, no, we're in new business.
Sorry about that.
We have none. Persons before council, we have two. We have Elaine Foster. Could you come up and give us your name and address for the?
Okay. We got it. Yeah.
All right. You guys know who I am. Haven't been around for a while because of COVID and other things going on. I just want to start by saying that the invocation says that you operate on a continuing sense of truth and fairness. And I come tonight, like I said, it's been a while, and I wasn't planning on coming until I drove by and realized that I was hoping that Mr. Kaminsky would be here, and he's not. I don't know if there's, I don't think there's another representative place. I come to you about the deer management program that's never left my heart, it's not going to leave my heart. And I was discouraged on January 21 with the News 5. Can you guys hear me and understand me with this mask on?
I can hear you.
It's a little hard.
It's hard?
A little bit.
I know, but I can't, I can't take it off. On January 21, News 5 did a episode on the deer management program, the aerial survey that was going to be taking place in the city of Mentor. And I will tell you that, and I have it still on my phone, that the things that they reported were so outdated. And I guess I'm asking whoever's in charge of the natural resource, whoever's in charge of that website, I went on it, it is very much outdated. The deer management program, they said, has been going on since 2013. If I'm researching correctly, I think it's a little bit longer than that, which is a number of years. But they still have the old employees on there, they still have the old statistics, and those are false today. And I'm here to ask the natural resource department to please look at that website and please stop instilling fear in the residents about the deer population in Mentor. There is, there is no underdeveloped deer, there are no diseased deer in the city. Matter of fact, I talked to a representative of the natural resource department, and he himself indicated to me that there is nothing true about diseased deer in the city of Mentor. Also, they said there's no natural predators. There are indeed. The coyote population is up in Mentor. We see it in neighborhoods. I've talked to residents in other neighborhoods other than my own, and there are coyotes in Mentor, and they are taking animals out. So, they're there. I just want truth and fairness in the city of Mentor about this deer population, the deer management program. It's time to take another look at it, in my opinion, for whatever it's worth, truth and fairness needs to preside, not only in the big financial issues in the city of Mentor, but also what you're feeding the public.
Thanks, Elaine. Your time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have another group, Rolling Thunders here, Paul Wiget, to give us a little presentation on some of their interests. Thanks for coming, Paul.
Thank you for having me.
Paul, I'm sorry. Give me your name and address, and you have four minutes. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. Paul Wiget, W-I-G-E-T, 9662 Oxford Glen Drive, Mentor.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, I'm from Rolling Thunder, Ohio, Chapter 1. For those of you who are not familiar with Rolling Thunder, we are a veterans advocacy group.
If you have pictures, Paul, put them on the table if you want to show us anything.
Oh, okay.
If you have pictures, you can keep your reading part.
Okay. Rolling Thunder was founded back in 1988, and it was incorporated in 1995. First of all, it sets them the record straight. Rolling Thunder is not a motorcycle club. A lot of us own motorcycles, that's true. We're also not all 100% veterans, but a lot of us are veterans. It all came about due to the POW/MIA issue that we wanted to bring aware to everybody. And that's why I'm here, is to talk about what we do, plus what we'd like to see done here in the city council building, here in city hall. The, our mission statement, our major function is to publicize the POW/MIA issue, to educate the public to the fact that many American prisoners of war were left behind after all past wars. From being left behind, they should become prisoners of war, missing in action. We are committed to helping all veterans. One of the big things is the awareness, and that is why we'd like to suggest that we have a Chair of Honor, POW/MIA Chair of Honor, placed in the atrium downstairs. Now, they're placed across the country now, various locations. We just placed one in Hospice over in Medina last week. We placed one in the Hospice in Euclid, the 1st of January. The footprint for it, this platform that it sits on, is only 48 inches by 48 inches. Chair that sits in the middle of platform, then there's a pedestal and a plaque. We can leave this with you and show you the pictures of it. There's also two flags, one that goes on each side of the platform, so the total footprint width is going to be about 84 inches, 48 inches deep. They also have, I mean, they've got them now at Ohio State University Football Stadium, has an outdoor chair. Indianapolis Colts have one. Plus, there's even high schools that have them.
Thank you, Paul.